Hi, how are you?
Good. Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. We do have need to go into executive session for litigation purposes for Board of Equalization. Could I please have a motion or second?
Right, do we have a motion to be approved?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. We'll continue on with the Board of Equalization. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 27, 2015, and item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, November 17, 2015, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value in property.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Item C, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. Item D, approving corrections for errors in assessment in personal property, and item E, approving applications for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the County Treasurer.
So move.
Does that include adjournment?
Yes, just a second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. We'll move to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 27, 2015, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, November 10, 2015.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments? Please vote. Consent agenda, items A through O, please note that item A is going to be stricken. Any other items for the consent? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve?
Question.
Commissioner Boyle has a question on E.
Yes, could someone tell me who this, who that suit was involved? I see the plaintiff, and I see Douglas County, but who Douglas County? Which office?
Commissioner, I believe it was the Treasurer's office.
Treasurer's office?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the consent? Is there?
The approval of consent, the last item A.
Second.
No further questions or comments? Please vote.
Sorry.
Recognition and proclamations. We have one that's here today, and our Director of our HR, Civil Service, Karen Bush, is going to present the resolution to Elizabeth Berthold.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am very pleased to be able to be here to present this resolution. Whereas Douglas County, Nebraska recognizes its employees are the county's most important asset and resource for providing quality service to the citizens of Douglas County, whereas the county wishes to recognize Elizabeth A. Berthold of the Health Department on her retirement and dedicated service of 23 years to Douglas County, Nebraska. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that the county recognizes Elizabeth A. Berthold for her dedicated service to the citizens of Douglas County, and thankfully presents this resolution as testimony thereof dated this third day of November, 2015. Elizabeth?
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
And you can, the other Health Department employees can come forward too if they'd like to stand with you.
If we get them to stand, we'll do well.
Good.
Yay. Thank you for your service. Yes, you're welcome.
We have a camera facing that way over there.
Okay.
It's actually a movie.
And before we continue with your presentation, can we take a quick break and recognize our little visitors in the back? Could you tell us where you're from?
We're from Catlin Arts Magnet.
I'm sorry?
Catlin Arts Magnet.
Catlin, well, welcome, and what grade are you guys in?
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade. Well, it's nice of you to come visit us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you explain what the legislature does to the fourth graders?
Yeah, that'd be good.
The County Board is a creature of the state, so we're a body that does pretty much what the state tells us to do, and we're responsible for the poor and the indigent of our community. And two of our biggest areas is health and human services, so we help the elderly, the mentally ill, and those that can't afford to get insurance on their own or have no government insurance. And then our largest expenditure is those that hit our criminal justice areas, and so we have jail for adults and a jail for juveniles. So that's pretty much in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for coming.
Enjoy your tour.
So you see the younger county employees.
Yes.
These actually could become county employees.
Yeah.
And today, we are here to celebrate an individual who has worked for the county for 23 years, Liz Berthold. She came from the laboratory background, and she has overseen the STD control program for all the time she has been with the county. And I'll just tell you two small stories. One was in 2004, when the Board of Health declared STDs at epidemic levels. I said to Liz, I said, let's put a business plan together. What would it really look like if you could dream that we really can address this issue? And Liz came forward, and she brought forward a plan, $1 million a year. And her and I, over the next many, several years, went around the community and said, you know, this is really what it takes. We need some influx of resources to really address this. Move forward 10 years, the Women's Fund Board decided that adolescent health was one of the priorities that they were going to address, and came to us and to many stakeholders in the community and said, and what would it take to address this issue? I went to Liz and I said, let's dust off that old plan, that old dream we had together, what it would take, and right now, 10 years from now, the Women's Fund is funding all these efforts in the community. So that's one story that obviously will stay with me, with Liz. The other story is that under Liz's leadership, she really started what we call non-traditional testing in libraries. And I want the Board to know that it is such a unique way how we are doing this testing, actually going to the community where the young people are, that there is a physician at the College of Public Health, Dr. Delayer, she actually wrote this up, she researched this, and she found that this was so innovative. She looked at the age groups that would go to public libraries, at the percentage of positives that we have at the library. She wrote it up as an article in a science journal, peer-reviewed science journal, and now the title says something like Innovative Way of Testing High-Risk Youth in Non-Traditional Settings in Omaha, Nebraska. That is the title, and so it is out in the scientific literature for others now to repeat this all over, and this was the first community to actually do that. Again, kudos to Liz for her leadership with all her staff on this. What a great contribution she did to the Public Health Department, but also to the county as a whole. So Liz, my thank you to you, and I know there are many grandchildren at home now who are going to be very thankful to see their grandma more often, so please come up, and you may want to have some comments to say. So thanks again for all the work.
Thank you. Okay, I'm Liz, can you see me over this? I haven't grown much through the years here. Anyway, when you retire, you get real sentimental, so I was looking back, and I have some thank yous, but they come with a story that I just wanted to share with you. I remember 23 years ago, in a few months, you know, I was so excited, I'm trooping down to the Civic Center, brand-new interview suit, you know, enthusiastic and all this stuff, and, you know, it's where the mayor's office is, and the courthouse, and government, and all this stuff, and I'm going up to the fourth floor Health Department to interview for a job, so I'm very, very excited. So then, you know, as luck would have it, they offered me the position of Supervisor of the Sexually Transmitted Disease Control Program, and when I told friends in the Methodist system I was leaving, one said, is that a night job? How else do you control STDs? Anyway, so I got every reaction under the sun, but I took the job and was ready to begin, and found out as I began that they hadn't told me quite everything about the job. And the first thing was, even though I'd interviewed here in this hub of government, and I was really excited, I was told to report for work at an old brick building on 42nd Street. And I did, and there I met my STD staff, one of them's still here today. Tim waving his hand. And I also met some other Health Department colleagues out there, the Health Department laboratory was out there, and they did things like a little bit of chlamydia testing, but mainly they looked for contaminants and pollutants in soft-serve ice cream and residential well water, you know, generally kind of nasty stuff. Also, the County Rat Patrol was out there with all their bags of rat poison, enough for, would have covered half of Douglas County, I think. But anyway, I'm out there, and I was told from them, the consensus among those employees was that the socially acceptable sections of the Health Department were all housed in the Civic Center. And the part that they really didn't want to acknowledge, or think about, or talk about, was out in this old building on 42nd Street. And they also told me, and I didn't ever research it, it just fit the story too perfectly, they also told me it was previously a horse barn for county or city horses. The building's since been torn down, made homeless thousands of mice and cockroaches. But anyway, that was the beginning, and it was fun out there. I mean, we enjoyed ourselves, you know, and felt isolated, and, you know, felt sorry for ourselves, whatever. But anyway, the second thing then that I learned on the job that I know they didn't tell me in the interview, was that the STD supervisor was responsible for the salaries of herself and her staff. I mean, responsible, there's a little help from the county, but basically, the expectation was the supervisor writes grants, mentors and coaches all the employees to meet the goals of the grants and goals of the funders, and then writes these, you know, glowing reports back of how much we accomplished every single year, you know, we had to do this. So, all right, I accepted that, and, you know, I really learned, this is the fortune part of this, I learned I love to write, and I also learned that if you didn't expound upon all the good things you did and tell people, nobody knew you did them. So I, you know, learned a couple valuable lessons with that. So now, going forward to 2015, I can say that I'm now aware, and maybe they did at the time, but I don't think so, but I am now aware that all of the supervisors in the Health Department do write grants to pay for at least some part of the salaries of their employees, and write all the grant reports that they have to, and, you know, we are all trying to keep our funders happy. And as Dr. Poor mentioned, this year was extremely fortunate for me with this opportunity from the Women's Fund, so the grants that I wrote and concocted, the ideas I had, brought in just slightly under $1 million for the STD program for a 12-month period. And if the, if all of the goals are maintained, then this, almost this level of funding will continue for two more years after that, for STDs, just for STDs, remember us, the ones you don't want to talk about? So anyway, in addition to that, the Health Department now encourages that supervisors take on interns and, you know, research some of our statistical stuff, and be involved in presentations and publications. And for me this year, and Dr. Poor said part of it, I looked back at the year, and, I mean, I've really been fortunate, I have been a co-author on two publications that are in two national health journals this year, and I've been a co-investigator on two oral presentations, one at a national public health conference, the other at an international infectious disease physician conference, so, and my name went, I mean, they don't know me, but, you know, anyway, so it's fortunate, I mean, yeah, granted, they will never come and shake my hand, but, you know, how neat to see your name there. And the final thing that I wanted to say, the Health Department really now is encouraging innovative things, try, try some new things, try a little bit of cutting-edge kinds of things in the county. And so, in the STD program this year, we implemented rapid testing for syphilis, and it is recently FDA-approved for use in a clinical setting. So, you know, nobody else around is doing it here in town, and we're really working with them as they get this program, this company gets this program off the ground. The other thing we are presently working on right now that has been true for people who had insurance for years, they could access their health information online, but our public health clients couldn't, and we're working on a program now so that all the clients that we test, either in our public health STD clinic, or in all the outreach testing that we do, which as Dr. Poor said is libraries, now even includes high school football games, although they're hoping for basketball because it'll be inside and warmer. But, anyway, we, all this testing that we're doing, we are working on a program to make it confidentially, electronically available, the test results to our clients, which, you know, public health people haven't had before, and they'll be able to access, at least their negative results, that's as brave as we are right now, they'll be able to access those via text or email online, and so should, you know, put the Health Department in a little bit of bright lights one more time. So, anyway, obviously, this is definitely the year to retire. Definitely that, but what I have to say is that none of this, I mean, I'm lucky, I get to stand here and claim a lot of this, but all of this is due to those people, you know, I mean- You know, I mean, you can't do it without their ideas, their hard work. You know, I, I just, I can't imagine my life without them because it's, the years have been wonderful and I've had really hard-working, dedicated staff, and I've had a division chief here that actually can read the things I write because my brain writes faster than my keyboard skills and she can put in the extra words sometimes. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you. It's been an exceptional year for me, so definitely, let's not, you know, risk it. I've got my Super Bowl ring of Health Department, sir. And I do want to thank everybody. And I'm looking at some people that I've worked with over the years, so, you know, Chris, Mary Ann, you guys have been a big help and I really appreciate all your support. So that was it.
Well, thank you very much. Before we go to board comments, I would like to recognize another set of visitors that came in. And could you tell us where you're from and what grade?
We're from Camden Arts苑.
Another crew, all right. Well, welcome to county government. We're glad you came to visit us. Have fun on your tour.
And can I briefly interject something? The talk you just heard was so appropriate about sharing responsi-- this is for the kids. The talk you just heard was so appropriate for sharing responsibility, for learning that one person through leadership can make a huge difference. And as Commissioner Boyle said to the last group, you are our future leaders, city council, county board, congressmen, congresswomen, senators. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. Have fun on your tour. Bye-bye. Now there are a couple, one light, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Liz. I mean, we mentioned a little bit of the Board of Health meeting, but here in a more public setting, on behalf of the members of the Board of Health, want to thank you for your years of service, particularly toiling in a topic area that has taken much time to get some traction on. Even though we've got something the outside, there's a long way to go. But at least you can know from the internal perspective of the county, we've come a long way from you being exiled to 42nd Street. We eventually came to you and the headquarters is now at 42nd Street. So with that, want to thank you for your service and sure you have a lot more to work to do outside of county government on this. So appreciate it.
And I'd like to echo those. You know, when I first came on the board, of course, there were a lot of different faces, even in the Health Department, and the STD issue was one that at that time was even being talked about at the Board of Health. And we tried to bring it to the county board level and it was at that point still even taboo talk. We were not to talk about that in public. And so it was crazy to see from where we started until now. And again, you've been instrumental in it and of course, Adie's been instrumental as well, but all of the Health Department employees that have lifted this up and continued to fight the fight of it, we're not done, we probably never will be, but from where we were to where we are, you guys have done a tremendous job and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And if you would, if you could just come up and shake our hands and then we'll, and we took the vote, right? No? Okay, please vote for the resolution.
Thank you.
Very appreciative, very valuable person. You really contributed.
This year, yeah.
Thank you. Nice. Yes. That's wonderful. Good.
Got it. Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. With that, we'll go to citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearings. We have one, Class 1 Licensed Beer Wine Distilled Spirits on sale only for Tavern 180, Inc., DBA Tavern 180 at 203 North 180th Street. Manager application is Brett C. Clear of 15916 Mary Street. And after the public hearing, we can take action today. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. This is an upscale dining restaurant just west of Village Point. Similar owners as to those of Tanner's, very experienced in the restaurant and bar liquor license industry. So with that, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Rogers? Oh, is that left over? Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this is the public hearing for the liquor license? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote. We'll move, thanks, Sean. We'll move to the committee of reports, the first being the finance, the budget report, if there's anything either chair wants to point out. As presented, no further questions on that. Administrative services, child, youth, community services. Commissioner Kraft, do you want a minute?
Yes.
Oh, I missed one. Sorry.
Yeah, do you want to go back to that?
Yeah, I want to go back. Child and youth, there's discussion slash action for approval of contract with the National Association of Counsel for Children to have its executive director, Kendall Marlowe, serve as the facilitator of the Douglas County Guardian at Lightem Task Force. This I brought forward after our ongoing discussions about how to best provide guardian at lightem services within Douglas County, which could stretch to possibly a model for how we provide these statewide. And so through many discussions, and I can't remember when it was, but Mr. Marlowe came to the board and talked about it and everyone was very, very impressed with his presentation and felt it would be advantageous to maybe bring him back at some point. And that's what this is today, is presenting a contract with him to come back and help us walk through. We pretty much have maybe three or four ideas on the table as to how and what we should do with guardian at lightem services. He'll help us walk us through with national expertise that he has. And so I am bringing that forward today for discussion and we could take action if the board so desires. Commissioner Kraft?
This is, I was at that presentation and I'm sure there are people who can, other people who can do this. And I realize the contract's only for $5,000 and with the option of our extending it, increasing the funding. I'm not in favor of an in-house office on this, as I've stated a couple times. And I just don't think I can vote for this because it's $5,000 I don't think we need to spend. And I don't know if there's anybody in the office that's going to speak in favor or against this, but I just, I see all sorts of problems with having an in-house department and the accountabilities of, and the people thinking we can influence department when we should not, in any way, shape or form, have that influence. I think the judges can do a good and adequate job of appointing people guardian at lightems. And they're going, they still have control. Even if we develop a department, it doesn't mean they're going to like our attorneys and appoint those attorneys. And that's all I want to say.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I appreciate the point of view of Commissioner Kraft. And I think that's, you know, a good example of maybe why we should have a robust discussion and that we should all be members of and active participants in this task force going forward because we're going to have to make that decision ultimately. And so we should be involved in the process from the beginning. I think in order to make that the most informed decision that we can, this is probably a good step forward to bring someone in. I don't think I was on the board when this gentleman made his presentation, but I have made inquiries and I think that he probably, or his company, will provide us with a good framework for this robust discussion of how we should go forward. As you may or may not recall, the county 15 years ago, as a division of the Public Defender's Office, absolutely ran this entity. And so we're in some sense going back to the future. And the reason for that largely is budget-driven by the exploding costs that the courts have authorized in outsourcing the guardian at lightem. It's proved to be problematic, both from a fiscal point of view and from the qualitative delivery of legal services point of view, as, you know, we've all heard from citizen comments to this board over the last 11 months that I've been here anyhow. And so this is an attempt to, you know, maybe do something better along those lines. I understand your reservations, but having been a member of the Public Defender's Office when that, this duty was performed by the Douglas County Public Defender, I think that the concerns that you have can probably be addressed through this process. And so I think I'd be in favor of commencing the process in this fashion. We need to move forward to try to find a better way forward for the provision of guardian at lightem than we currently have.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, I've listened carefully both to Commissioner Kraft and to Commissioner Kavanaugh, and I agree with both. I am totally opposed to having the staff of seven or eight attorneys with another attorney as their guardian and then reporting all the time and all the rest of it. It's just overwhelming. And I think it'd be a big mistake. I think we should have learned our lesson with the two contracts or three contracts we put out. We didn't keep track of the time. We were criticized, rightfully so, by the state auditor, and I hope we've learned our lesson. This, to me, is a chance to really do exactly what Commissioner Kavanaugh said, a robust discussion of alternatives. At the same time, Commissioner Kraft makes the point about why we shouldn't jump in this quicksand of hiring a whole group of lawyers to do this. I agree with him totally. The one thing that really bothers me a lot about this whole guardian at lightem process is that there's a group of people who cannot participate, and that's the judges. We take testimony, we take comments from the public, and they have their point of view and, and for the most part, it could be correct, it could not be correct, we don't know. But the judges, their staffs, the attorneys that represent these children are not able to step to the podium and say, oh, this is another, this is what happened from my point of view and why I did what I did. They can't do that. So this is a very important, I think, and I commend Commissioner Borgeson for bringing this forward, a very important opportunity for us to really discuss this fully, hopefully make a decision that will take us out of the equation. I think Judge Wade Thomas said it best that our job, the county board's job, is to pay the bill and that's it. I mean, I hate it to be, it's too bad, it's so blunt, but that is the deal. And for us to get in the middle of this and have attorneys is a horrible mistake. So I've already kind of come to conclusions, you can hear it, but keep in mind that we have a whole group of people who are, have to remain silent. And we have to make sure that their point of view somehow comes through. They're the people who actually work these cases. And like I said, they can't speak. So I intend to support this. I'm very, very much in favor of it and I thank Commissioner Borgeson for putting it on the agenda to our new board.
Commissioner Dudo?
Thank you. I'm curious by Commissioner Kraft's comments because I think we're very much on the same line of thinking on this, although I'm okay with bringing on a facilitator to help us get from point A to point B. I think you and I are probably in agreement on what we would like to see, the point B be, but how do we get there? I'm okay with bringing in Mr. Marlowe. My bigger concern is who's going to be on the task force? And how does, how is that group being formed? Who makes the decision on who will be serving on that task force? I have fears of the people that now perceive that if they don't like what went on in court, they can come to the county board and plead their case like we can do something about it. It makes me very uncomfortable. I think it's wholly inappropriate to hear one side of a story and I just want to keep us as far removed from the process as possible. I don't want anybody having the expectation that if they didn't like what they got in court, they can kind of appeal to us and we'll try to intervene and do something about it. So I am uncomfortable with the idea of having it in-house, but we've got to figure out how we're going to do it and what's the best way to get there. So I'm okay with the task force, I believe.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. And I would be more comfortable if we were to have the Public Defender's Office be in charge of this, but we cannot tell him what to do. This is a, if we have control of the department, the public perception's going to be that we have control of the employees of that department. Now, this whole discussion started in front of us, which was really the inappropriate forum because of somebody's unhappy divorce. If everybody who had an unhappy divorce came to us and spent five minutes of our time, we'd be here 24 hours a day, non-stop. Everybody who has an unhappy court case from the precedent we have set could come here and speak for five minutes, or in some cases, they've been allowed to speak up to an hour. And it seems as though a common theme has been a vendetta against one or two particular judges and one or two particular law firms and certain individual attorneys. And this is not the appropriate forum. You know, guardian at lightem step in to a very uncomfortable situation. Nobody's going to be happy. They're stepping in in very unhappy circumstances. Many of these people are incompetent or incapable of seeing themselves and what they're doing. And I have two cases in front of me. One spoke to us two weeks ago, I believe it was, where she said, I've been in front of a psychiatrist, he says I'm sane. I have no problems. But if you read this document, and I don't know if we all got it.
Yes.
We did? Okay. If you read it, her husband, who now lives in Texas, says she's crazy.
I don't think you should go there.
Okay. I've been, you're right. But the one side of the story is so totally lopsided that, you know, I just think we're going there for the wrong reasons. And you're right, Commissioner Boyle, thank you for stepping in.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I think we have a consensus that we should probably move forward on the proposed resolution with a couple of caveats, which would be, as Commissioner Dudo pointed out, the composition of the, of the task force, which I think should include the commissioners and take into account Commissioner Kraft's idea on the public defender, maybe not as a place to put this, again, responsibility, I don't know that we even could if we wanted to, but to draw on the expertise and the institutional knowledge present there as the entity that in the not-so-distant past actually administered exactly what we're talking about in terms of a guardian at lightem service provided by Douglas County. So I'd move for approval. of this resolution. We move on.
Commissioner, there's a second. Commissioner Boyle?
If the motion's been made and seconded, are we, are you going to vote now?
There's another light on, and then probably the public's here that wants to speak.
Okay. Well, the only comment I was going to make is that this talk about the public defender, the public defender is handling a whole host and a lot of guardian ad litem cases. The reason that we're in this fix is that attorneys have been appointed for everybody and their mother in these guardian ad litem cases, and the public defender has conflict of interest. And so that's why we find ourselves here. So it used to be legal aid years ago. Legal Aid Society did a lot, almost all of these, and then we split it off and did contracts. But the number of attorneys that have to be, that are permitted to be appointed has just multiplied. And the public defender has conflict, so the public defender is really out of the picture. They're doing their thing, and we have a responsibility to see that these other people have representation, and that's where we are, I think. And that's where we need to find the solution. So I know there's others in the audience who want to speak, so.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. How is the task force appointed? What's the process going to be on that?
My thoughts on that would be that the board, I had two thoughts. There could be, their meetings would be open, so there could be limited commissioners. But what I've heard is that the board wants to be all involved. So we could have everybody involved as commissioners, and then a commissioner pick a person that they would like to be on it as well. I do believe, I had down the public defender, the county attorney, a member of the GAL, I don't think you have association, but AGAL to be on it, and then public members. So I haven't any preconceived clue, I was just writing names down, as to how to get this thing started. Chris, did you want to speak?
Thank you. My name is Monica Kruger, and I have been a resident of Douglas County, Nebraska for the last thirty years. I am a member of the bar and a practicing attorney in the juvenile court system. I have appointments as counsel for parents, counsel for children as guardian ad litem, counsel for children in delinquency actions. So I have a breadth of experience in this arena, and I've been doing it for the last twenty years. I have a number of concerns and questions with respect to the task force. The proposed contract indicates that the purpose would be to improve the juvenile court system. And I guess I would like specific response to exactly what's wrong with it. What are we trying to improve? As a number of you have indicated, there have been a parade of people that have come here and given their side of the story. And we are not able to refute that because we are bound by rules of professional responsibility, which do not allow us to disclose confidential information. But that information is public record, and I would urge all of you to check the public record to see exactly what brought those people into juvenile court and why their children were removed. And then also follow it throughout the process. They had due process. They had attorneys. They had an opportunity to be heard. If they had an issue with a guardian ad litem, they could have brought that to the court's attention, and they didn't. So I can appreciate that the board is not wanting that, and I think that if we have a county office, that's exactly what you're going to find. And so, but we're not unappreciative of the fact that there are cost issues. However, I'm not sure that this is the best way to go about it. I have concerns about who's going to be on the task force as well. This is about guardians ad litem. Certainly, we'd need more than one guardian ad litem to be involved in the task force. In addition, I don't know if you're aware, but the Supreme Court in Nebraska in June of this year adopted some new guidelines, actually court rules, that are now in effect. And if I could, pass these out to everyone?
They are. So these court rules already are in place, and they already implement standards for guardians ad litem. They speak to who can serve as a guardian ad litem. They speak to what the duties of a guardian ad litem already are. They also talk about when a guardian ad litem is required to meet with a child. And I've heard over and over again from people who come up here and say guardians ad litem don't meet with children. That is patently untrue. I meet with children all the time. I'm going to meet with one today. I met with one over the weekend. I met with three or four last week. And I think that's true of most, if not all, of the bar. There may be, if there's an issue, then that needs to be addressed. But it's not a, it's not a system-wide problem. So these court rules specifically provide that in addition to when a guardian ad litem is required by statute to meet with the child, which is within two weeks of appointment and once every six months, the child also has the ability to request that their guardian ad litem meet with them. The guardian ad litem also needs to meet with the child if there's an emergency or if they've been contacted about some kind of significant event, if there are any significant issues that are affecting the child's best interests, and then every time the child's placement changes. So we already have rules in effect with respect to what guardians ad litem are supposed to do. They also say who a guardian ad litem is supposed to consult with, that a guardian ad litem is supposed to prepare a written report, including the recommendations. And in fact, attached to here as an exhibit is a guardian ad litem form that's been adopted by the Supreme Court. So I'm not exactly sure what this task force would be doing, because we already have things in place that require guardians ad litem to meet a certain standard. Again, I'm just, I'm frustrated because I think there's a lot of good work being done in juvenile court, and unfortunately, you're not able to hear from those people. I think there were some people whose names were brought up at the last meeting. Unfortunately, they can't address those concerns. Again, I would urge you to check out records that are part of the public record. And with that, I think Ms. Costantakos has some comment. Any questions?
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. As a practical matter, you know, we don't have the resources to go look at those files and read them and see what the other side is, what the judge decided and all the testimony. We don't have the resources to do that, which is a huge problem. The other is that I'd like to ask you, is it possible, and I understand fully the restrictions that you're under and the judges are under and all the court personnel about speaking about a case in public, I understand that. Is there some way that, is there some way that there could possibly be a summary of some of those cases without getting so specific that you would border on violating your ethics?
Well, with respect to the cases for the individuals who's come to speak, I've already pulled all of those records, and I could make them available to you. They are public record. You can get them off Justice. I don't know that they're so cumbersome that you would need a summary, but...
Well, the reason I say that, first of all, I'm not sure that, I've only practiced very limited in juvenile court, very limited practice. And the rest of us here are not used to looking at those kinds of files. I don't know, maybe they use a little Latin here and there, although I knew some Latin. But I'm concerned that we wouldn't be able to really, really get the impact. We need something that's pretty clear language that translates what happened into real, clear sentences. And you don't have the time to do that. I mean, but I just think that's, if we're really going to do this, that's the only way to do it, I think. Because we don't have, I don't know who, no one on our staff has the time to assemble this. I'll be honest with you, I haven't, I had surgery a couple of weeks ago, I haven't read that case that Commissioner Kraft referred to, so I'm not up on that. I wasn't here when that testimony was taken. So, I mean, I am not up to speed on that case, let alone all the others that you're talking about. So, and I'm an attorney. I mean, I, you know, I should be reading those things, but I didn't. I read other things on the county board instead. So I don't think it's practical for, to tell or ask us to say, read these summaries or read these other, I don't think it can happen.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is just because of the fact that there is another side.
There absolutely is.
And I think the information that's been presented to you has been very incomplete. And I think it's been presented in such a fashion that it looks like terrible things are going on in juvenile court, and that's certainly not true. Children are removed before guardian ad litem gets appointed. The guardian ad litem has nothing to do with removal. A petition's filed based upon a motion that has an affidavit from someone with knowledge, so it's usually a law enforcement or someone from Child Protective Services with some information about what the risk of harm is for this child. And then a judge signs an order based upon that information, taking the child out of the home, and then setting it for hearing. And it has to be set within a very short period of time. So there's a process. And people don't have their children just yank from them for no reason. And they have actual opportunity to be heard all along the way. Parents have attorneys, and I think someone mentioned the Public Defender's Office. They have a contract to represent parents. So if you can't afford one, you get a public defender to represent you. So they're heard. Their interests are heard. So I think what you've been presented so far is very skewed. And I don't know that we, we certainly don't want to throw these people under the bus. A lot of these, I represent parents. I know the kinds of difficulties they have and the things that bring them into the system. And we certainly don't want to throw these people under the bus. I mean, they're dealing with enough already. But on the other hand, it's totally unfair to have somebody come up here and present you with information like it's gospel and say that the system is broken because this is what happened to me, when you only hear their skewed viewpoint.
Let me ask you a question, and I'll try, this is my last question. You know, when you watch the national news at night and someone has had, a noted figure has had some kind of surgery and so forth, the doctor that did the surgery isn't talking, but there is someone else who is not involved in the case who will talk in general about what the surgery was. Is that possible for a lawyer to do that, for a lawyer to step up who's not involved in the case and come up and talk to us about what happened? I mean, that might be, I mean, I'm not, I'm not really interested in having this turned into the kind of forum that it has been, where, you know, if we have those kind of discussions, I think it almost ought to be a separate committee. I mean, because it is lengthy and it's important. But would it be possible for a lawyer to do that, say from the law school, either Nebraska or Creighton, to come up here and summarize why this happened and what the other side of the, of the case is all about, so that we do hear, you know, hear the judicial side without the judges talking, who hear what happened, why the lawyer, what the lawyer did without the lawyer actually speaking? Could we have a third party do that for us?
Well, I think that you could have a third party review the documents. And those are, like I said, are public record. So the motions that were filed with the affidavits attached, which brought the case before the juvenile court, the actual filing of the petition, what the allegations were, and then the orders that were entered at each stage of the proceedings. Somebody could summarize those.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I had a quick question for you. As I understand it, it is public record, then why couldn't it be discussed here? I'm just curious why the attorney can't discuss it if it's public record?
Well, actually, I'm not an attorney, I'm not the attorney on any of those cases that have come before the board, so I could discuss them. I guess, I don't know that that's any better than those people coming and, I just think this is such a difficult emotional situation, and I don't know that we need to air those people's dirty laundry. But I just think you need to know that there is another side.
But if that person is here making a statement, and it's public record, listening to the, you know, the comments that are made, and you have public record stating what went on in that particular case from the attorney's point of view, why can't that attorney state it if they want to do, he or she?
Well, I think that the actual attorney representing the party, that would be difficult because they're supposed to be an advocate for their client. And how's that advocating their client's position to present that information? I mean, I think you have some confidentiality issues with respect to that, but certainly another attorney could come and speak to it, if that's what the board wants.
Yeah, it just seems like if it's public record, then they could state whatever they want to do themselves about it. You know, if my medical was public record, then the doctor could certainly comment about it because it's all a matter of public record that Mark Kraft, Commissioner Kraft, could look up or anyone else could.
Well, I don't think an attorney can speak on an issue regarding their client without their client's permission. So I don't think a client, the actual attorney representing the parent could do that. But certainly, some other attorney could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. Listening to the pros and cons of the individual cases regardless of who is making the presentation, I don't want to go there. We're an administrative board. That's not our job. I don't want to be listening to these cases. I don't want to spend my time trying to figure out, did he say or she say? And what difference does it make what I think? At the end of the day, it makes no difference. It's a waste of our time. It's not the direction that this board should be going. And I don't, I'm not looking for ways for us to get more information about these cases. I'm looking for ways for us to be clearly removed from the process. Thank you.
As I've been saying since the get-go, this is not the proper forum. This is, and you brought up the waste of time. You know, when somebody speaks for five minutes in front of us, it's not just five minutes. It's a collective amount of time for each of the seven of us, all of our staff, everybody in the audience, the department heads. It ends up into hours and hours and hours collectively, five minutes at a time. So this is not the appropriate forum. I've been saying it, and I wish other people would recognize it. So thank you.
My name is Chris Costantakos. I'm an attorney. I practice in juvenile court. I am the author of Juvenile Court Law and Practice, published by Thomson Reuters, now in its tenth edition. And I am a taxpayer. Seems to me that when I watch board meetings, and these questions about guardian ad litem issues come up, I see two aspects. One is how to contain the costs of guardian ad litem representation in juvenile court cases. The other is some kind of a speculation that the guardian ad litem system in Douglas County is somehow broken, and that this board needs to jump into it and fix it. Costs, quality. Costs, quality. I want to talk about the second aspect, quality. You do listen, week after week, to a steady parade of persons who come before you, present you with their version of what has happened. I think we can't argue with their perceptions. Their perceptions and their experiences are their experiences. But in the majority of these cases, these are parents whose children have been removed from their care in connection with petitions filed by the county attorney alleging child abuse or child neglect, or children who have committed law violations and who find themselves before the juvenile court for purposes of treatment or rehabilitation. The issue of fact-checking has come up. You know, Commissioner Boyle says you don't have the time to do this. You have lawyers. If a litigant comes before you who says, this terrible thing happened in my case, why can't your attorneys run the justice system and find out what the petition says, pull the applicable pleadings? They can write, and I'm not trying to make more work for Mr. Bloomingdale's staff, but they could write a brief summary of this is what the fact, these are what the facts are in the case. None of us can come down here and speak to you without a client's consent about what happened in a case. But you hear their version, but you don't fact-check. So you don't know if it's true or not. Nor do you inquire into the background of the people that come before you, nor do you consider who might be coaching them to come before you, or what the political agenda behind that might be. And I think Commissioner Boyle has brought out an excellent point. The judges can't come down here. They're constrained by ethics. They can't come and speak to you and say, here's why I ruled the way I ruled. I'm really not crazy, or I'm really not just an arbitrary person. The same for the lawyers. My observations is this. If you spent, or would spend, one half of the time that you've spent listening to these tales over the last two years, and go yourselves to the sixth floor, to the juvenile court, and observe firsthand, talk to the guardians ad litem. They can't talk to you about specifics, confidential information about the case. Talk to them about what they do. Talk to the judges, not about the specifics of the cases, but about the judicial process. What is it? What is the basis upon which children are removed? What's the basis upon which children are returned and reunified? Review case files. Even if you don't have time, have your legal staff review the case files and find out what actually does take place. what actually does take place in these cases. You'd learn what really goes on. I think you'd find out how complex these cases can be, and how hard the majority of attorneys do work on these cases. So I have to ask, why have you introduced this resolution? I think it's probably well-intended in its spirit. But when I look at it, the first whereas is to develop a method to improve guardian ad litem services in Douglas County. On page one of the proposed contract, under the objectives, "to provide guardian ad litem legal representation in a manner that is responsible, accountable, efficient, and cost-effective for county and its constituents; to provide ethical and professional guardian ad litem representation to children." The premise of both of those objectives is that we don't do that in Douglas County. It's obvious to me that you've accepted as an article of faith that guardian ad litem system in Douglas County is broken. And that's based upon the tales that have been presented to you. In terms of providing guardian ad litem representation in a manner that's responsible, state law mandates that a guardian ad litem be appointed for every single child in an abuse-neglect case, and that a guardian ad litem be provided in numerous other types of situations. This whole concept of guardian ad litem system is broken is one legal mirage. Training, you've been told guardian ad items are not trained. But the Supreme Court mandates by court rule that initial training and annual training must be completed by every single attorney before they can be appointed as a guardian ad litem to represent a juvenile in court proceedings. The training also specifies specific areas that the training has to take place in, such as the child's developmental capacity, Indian Child Welfare Act, abuse, substance abuse issues. I'm going to pass out the rule here. So training does happen for guardians ad litem. Then you've been told that training, the online training, that now is provided by the administrative offices of the courts is inadequate because you can watch a football game while taking the training. And this is told you by persons who have never taken the training. There is no way you can watch a football game while you're taking the online training. It's an interactive program. It requires the attorney to look at situations, to answer questions, and it's progressive. You can't start at Module Four without first having completed Modules One, Two, and Three. You've been told there's absolutely no financial accountability for guardian ad litem representation based on the two guardian ad litem contracts, and you were urged not to renew those. You voted not to renew them. Then you were told there's no accountability regarding court-appointed guardians ad litem because the written itemized billings of court-appointed attorneys certified as true were filed only with the court administrator. Now, all court-appointed attorney billing in juvenile court is openly available for public inspection. You've been told that the recommendations contained in the 2009 survey report that the legislature obtained is nothing but an expensive paperweight because none of those recommendations, excuse me, have been followed. But the statutory changes of L.B. 15 and the new guardian ad litem court rules adopted by the Supreme Court in June that Monica Kruger passed out to you clearly enumerate the powers and the duties of guardians ad litem in all juvenile court cases. It's not only Supreme Court rule, but it's a matter of state law that guardians ad litem must see their children in person. These are mandatory enforceable practice standards promoted by law and by the Supreme Court. To me, it only makes sense to form a task force and to spend another $5,000 of taxpayer money to hold discussions, more discussions, and more discussions on guardian ad litem representation if you choose to ignore all of these positive steps that have been taken to improve, already improve, guardian ad litem representation. My point is this: With everything that continues to be brought before you and be told to you about what's going on with guardians ad litem, the goalposts keep moving. You're told again and again, "This is wrong, then that gets fixed. This is wrong, then that gets fixed." This is nothing but a continuing jihad leveled against guardians ad litem in juvenile court. The other thing I think that is important to keep in mind is, with all due respect to the experiences of the persons who come before you, many of them tell you they are not attorneys. And you should listen to that. Because what that means in many cases is that they lack the education, the training, the critical skills to understand the legal framework of juvenile court proceedings, and they often jump to conclusions that are not warranted by the evidence. Based on watching court hearings, they characterize juvenile court proceedings as some kind of a star chamber where, you know, everybody is out to get the parents. It's an unholy alliance between the attorneys somehow and the judges, who have nothing better to do than conspire, to think up different ways to violate the due process rights of every parent or every child involved. Finally, I think I can watch -- people tell you they watch the court proceedings, and this is what their experience has been. I can watch brain surgery for one year, but that still doesn't mean that I understand what that surgeon is doing, why they're doing what they're doing, why they're not doing something else, why they're not choosing from other alternatives. So, those are my comments. I don't know if you have any questions, but I guess I don't really see the point of the task force. I don't know, really understand why you feel it's important to get down into the quality of guardian ad litem representation because it's based primarily on the information that you've been presented.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if my comments are going to respond to anything that was said at the podium, but just listening to everybody, I wanted to give my own thought on the context of this. Point, you know, the reason why the task force is looking into this is that Commissioner Boyle made a statement about Judge Thomas's point, and we just pay the bills. Okay, that's fine. But because we pay the bills, there's some say in it. So that's my answer to your question. Because we pay for it, there's rationale. And because you pay for it, I think you got to go into it to some degree.
You're saying...
Now, I'm just saying, but this is the deal. There's this whole fear like stuff drummed up by the county board. You all are talking from a judicial standpoint. This is a political environment. And people come up here and open comment and talk on things specifically that are not on the agenda. I understand your job. And the point is, there may be some dispute about probably how long people talk, but even today, the rule of the board is you get three minutes to talk. And people have talked beyond that three minutes. This is my point. Anybody can come up here and talk about anything they want to. And Commissioner Kraft, to his point, I agree, that's not the body. But during that section, I get paid to hear people during that section. That's what it's on there for, so I sit here and listen, not saying I agree anyway or not. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but I was an athlete, and there's a lot of people that couldn't throw a pebble through a big hula hoop. But they sit there and judge athletic competitions and things of that sort. So anybody can come up here and judge as a citizen what they may feel. That, to me, is the context. I'm not just getting discredit credit of anything up there. It's a separate body. It's other things of that point. But I'm going to just tell you, you're right. A lot of things may not be said, and I just listen because it's public comment. Now, this is about the second time, third time, that your side has come up here and said anything. And I don't care if you can't say anything about the case, at least come up here and say something's unclear. And I know you have to work in other things that matter, but let me note the point. This is not a courtroom. This is a political environment, and the county board is not steering all this up. The people that came in here some of the other times are involved in a whole lot of other political stuff. Things are steered up, and some of this stuff is steered up on the internet. So when you're in a political environment, there are not a lot of rules. You all are lawyers. You understand this. But that's the only thing I'm saying in this respect. I'm not saying it's good or bad. What I'm saying is, in a political environment, when the agenda item says you can come in and comment on anything not on the agenda, you got your time, you say what you are, and if people need to dispute it, they can. My answer to the simple piece is, there's no way you can spend $2, $3 million. And if your responsibility is to pay for it, you automatically pay for it. If the board's not supposed to say anything, the legislature can give the payment responsibilities to the Supreme Court and take us out of there. That would be my ideal view. Okay? But, you know, I'm just -- you know, the board in stir all this up, there's a whole lot of things out there. And when you come in a political environment, these are the rules. And I've had this discussion with judges, things of that point. I don't agree a lot of stuff said up here, but you come to a political environment, you have a chance to say something, say what you say. Okay, that's what it is. So I'm not trying to dispute what you say to some degree, but I'm just noting, I don't think the board's put justification on anything. I'm sure everybody up here understands that the division of powers is where it is. But to answer the main question, the reason why the task force, I think, is in place is because we pay for it, and we spent three months in a budget hearing saying, "This is unsustainable." So the only reason, the only way we can get at it is through the cost piece. So I definitely appreciate the work you all have done. And I've been up there, and I've seen it, and I've looked at it. So I understand it from some comments. But I'm glad to see you all come down and respond. I know you all, you know, worked to some degree, but the fact is, this is the first time you've heard the other side. And I agree with a lot of people. I don't want this to become a tit-for-tat, or we become a jury for some other stuff, but the fact is, you know, people have their right to speak. Thank you.
Well, I'm not saying that the board has stirred it up. I think others have stirred it up, but the board is responding. And the fact that the board is responding by desiring to create a task force certainly says to me, you accept the truthfulness of the assertions that the guardian ad litem system is broken.
No, we accept the fact that we can sustain the cost. And I mean that, and that's the point that we control.
Can I interject here real quick? Because there's a couple of things. We're not reacting by just the stories that we've heard. For three years, someone was asking questions about our contractual arrangements and details of how we were providing guardian ad items. And as a board, we ignored. We let them talk and then never answered. Emails went unanswered, calls went unanswered. And it wasn't until there was a question specifically directed to me in public about our contracts that I sat here and I couldn't answer. I then went to staff and asked staff to answer the question. It could not be answered. And so this, it built upon that and kept building upon that because there were more and more questions that came out. And the process in which we approved those contracts to begin with was flawed.
I know.
It was, there was a black cloud around it or over it when we first did it. And so was it a good one? You know, no, probably not. But we just let it go. And we let it go for many, many years. I think it was 15 years that we just kept renewing these contracts and had no response or accountability or responsibility to try to fix what was being presented as being wrong with those contracts. So what happened was, is from that, we decided to bring in an outside, bless you, an outside person, independent, which ended up being the state auditor, to look at things, new set of eyes, new process, and then come forward with the report as to whether or not our contracts were good, bad, or ugly. And the report was not flattering to the county board. And so along the way, there were people, and I will take full responsibility, and I will say I was wrong in letting the time go, as I am today, over our three-minute allotted time. My purpose for doing that is because this is such a big issue, not only monetarily for the taxpayers, but accountability, the quality, and the whole juvenile system that we're looking at as a whole, as a county board, this plays into it. So it isn't just one thing that brought us, or not one person coming forward at a public, at the public time to speak, that we decided to act upon this. This was built up over time and over many people looking at it and questions not being able to be answered. So, but Commissioner Rogers is right in the terms of this board is fully, fully wanting to look at the financial aspect of it because it is. It's unsustainable. And if it has to change legislatively, if it has to change through the court system, however, it has to change because we can't afford to continue and could not afford to continue the way that it was going. And so along the way, those legislative items that you talked about were because of things that were brought to this board that we made it a priority to go change. Those things were actually supposed to be in L.B. 15, and instead, the court asked Senator Chris to make them court rules, and they were taken out and then made court rule. So I agree that the recommendations from the 2009 that are now in place as court rules, but it took a long time to get there.
Well, but we're there.
I know we're there. And so, but now the piece is, we still have to, by statute, provide this service. And so our job is to, how do we provide it? There's been three or four ways in which to provide it that have been thrown out there. And in order for us to get from point A to point B, to vet all of those, when Mr. Marlowe came, every single board member from the time this discussion came up, came up and said, "I was really impressed with this gentleman. He did a superb job. He's so knowledgeable." And that's when we started to talk about bringing him back to walk us through these items. No decision has been made as to whether it be in-house, whether it be contracted, whether we throw our hands up and just pay. None of that's been decided, none of it at all. And that's where he, who doesn't have a vested interest, so to speak, in any part of this, will walk us through what those, what the ideal model is for us to provide these services. So it's much more than just a few people coming up and telling their stories to us. It's much, much more than that.
The thing I guess I'm not clear about is, one-third of the people of Nebraska, just about, live in Douglas County. That means one-third of the families arguably are here, one-third of the children of Nebraska live here, and one-third arguably of the problems in families are here. We have the biggest number of cases in this particular county. The problems that you see in juvenile court are reflective of the larger society as a whole. We have more people here than in the other counties. And I hear this talk about wanting to contain the cost. And it just strains my imagination how you can give $5 million of taxpayer money over the next 10 years to a hospital that has nothing to do with county governance. It makes me question your resolve to the children of Douglas County. If you're looking to cut the budget, slash the budget, contain the costs, how can that be?
Well, I'll tell you how that is. First of all, it's not tax dollars. It's inheritance tax dollars, which are different than property tax dollars. Still tax dollars, different pot of money. Yeah, you can shrug, but it is. It's not property tax dollars. And I'll tell you why that became so important to do at, and this is off-subject, I get it, but I want you to know, the reason that board went down that road was because our funding was being cut every time we turned around from the legislature. The market tanked. There was no, the housing market tanked. There was nothing being built. We were not bringing in tax dollars. And so the question, and many counties across the nation are involved in economic development, this board has never been. And it was that issue that we said, "You know what? Maybe we should try it. Maybe there's some revenue that's going to be brought in by the offset of what we put in there through inheritance tax dollars." And that was the reasoning behind bringing it to the board and getting involved in it. We can argue the pros and cons to it, just as we can argue the pros and cons of getting involved in the GAL issue until the cows come home. But there are rhymes and reasons why we did what we did on that issue. Commissioner Boyle?
I was reading the practice standards for guardian, guardians ad litem for juveniles and separate juvenile court proceedings. And, you know, we've talked about looking at these proceedings and digesting them and trying to get the other side ourselves. trying to get the other side ourselves. And I just want to read something from here. It says, "Legal counsel for the juvenile." Where, where a lawyer has been appointed to represent the legal interests of a ju, of the juvenile, for example, in a delinquency case, another lawyer appointed to serve as a guardian ad litem for such juvenile self-function, only in a single role as guardian ad litem for the juvenile concerning the juvenile's best interests, and shall be bound by all of the duties and shall have all of the authority of a guardian ad litem, with the exception of acting as legal counsel for the juvenile. Accordingly, the following shall apply. A, in serving as advocate for the juvenile to protect his or her best interests, the guardian ad litem shall make an independent determination as to the juvenile's best interests by considering all available information and resources. The guardian ad litem's determination as to the best interest is not required to be consistent with any preferences expressed by the juvenile. Upon making such determination, the guardian ad litem shall make such recommendations to the court and shall take the necessary actions to advocate and protect the best interests of the juvenile. As legal counsel for the juvenile, the guardian ad litem shall be entitled to exercise and discharge all prerogatives to the same extent as a lawyer for any other party in the proceeding. Where the juvenile expresses a preference that is inconsistent with the guardian ad litem's determination of what is in the best interests of the juvenile, the guardian ad litem shall assess whether there is a need to request the appointment of a separate legal counsel to represent the juvenile's legal interests in the proceeding. In making such assessment, the guardian ad litem shall consider, A, the juvenile's age, B, the juvenile's capacity, three, the juvenile's level of maturity, and the nature of the inconsistency... Okay. We are not able to digest this. We are, we are just not able. We don't have the staff. And I've asked legal counsel for an answer to a very basic question, and I have a habit of asking these questions, because it kind of, it gets to the core of what's taking place. I think we are totally off the rails, off the rails, talking about all of this and trying to oversee a separate part of government. The judiciary is not part of the county board. It is a separate, set up by the Constitution, it is a separate function. We have no right or ability to go in and overview what they're doing. We have no right to tell them to do something different. We have no ability to do that. So, what is the purpose of reading all these things? What is the outcome? There is no outcome. There's no action we can take. You know, when the county attorney is dealing with a case that comes up, a multiple murder, we don't call the county attorney and tell him what charges to file. We have never done that. I can tell you that without any reservation. No one ever on this county board, ever since the day this was formed, has ever told the county attorney what kind of charges to file. It's none of our concern, it's his purview. We don't look at the auto bureau and say, okay, we want to review all the titles you issued. We want to see whether or not you've got the right addresses on these and whether you're assessing those property. We have never done that. We, we just don't have the time to meddle and that kind of thing. So, because of this, I, I want to ask the county attorney, who I spoke to just a moment ago, what is our duty regarding guardian ad items?
Commissioner, strictly, strictly speaking, similar to-
Speak very loud, please.
Similar to your obligations in county court and district court, the statutory obligation of this board is to pay for court-appointed counsel.
To pay court-appointed attorneys. That's it?
Statutorily speaking, yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Ms. Costin-Takos, I just want to reply, because, you know, the U N M C comment is a cheap comment, it's a cheap shot.
What's that?
It's a cheap, your U N M C comment was a cheap shot.
Well, it was money spent, and it was tax money spent.
Yeah, but, but I'm saying it's a cheap shot, because, like I say, you're in a political environment, and my philosophy, no attack in a political environment. Wait a minute, you should go and respond. So, I'm just stating to you that, so you make that point. But over the 10 or so years that I've been here, the county has put massive efforts in the reforming juvenile justice, and we put about, partnering with some entities now, we put about $800,000 on the line to get there. So, I mean, I just wanted to respond to that point of saying, that has nothing to do with this in that respect. Now, I'm gonna just say, I don't care, any budget, at least from the people that I've been here, that, when, since I've been in county government, any department that submits a budget that doubles 100% is going to get seven people asking, what? And that, to me, is the genesis of what's there. You can't submit a budget there and not expect to, particularly when your only responsibility is the payment. And you're not looking at this, and I'm not, nobody here, I think, is looking at it in direct response of saying, it's going at the guardian ad litem. The whole discussion for the last five years has been this constraining resource base, more mandate coming from the state, and how are we going to pay for it? And that's the prism that is being looked at. So, I just couldn't let that go unresponsive, because there has been some efforts from that response. Thank you.
Well, my only point wasn't to make a cheap shot, but was to basically point out, you're looking desperately to cut the juvenile court budget, and it doesn't seem to cut equally across the tax base, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Hello, Laura McCormick, Nebraska Sunshine Project. Let's start by a little history, a quote from Pachol, 2009. Extremely few county attorneys, casas, D H H S cas, caseworkers, and foster care review board members stated that G A Ls personally meet with the child always. Stakeholders, including judges, expressed concerns that G A Ls were not meeting with their clients. Neither parents nor foster parents expressed high levels of confidence in the work that G A Ls do. One key informant stated, "The dual role is not the biggest problem in Nebraska. The biggest problem is that G A Ls don't talk to their clients or ever meet with their clients, so they don't even know what the child's position is." Next quote, "At its heart," these are not my words, these are Pachol, 2009, 150,000 tax dollars. At its heart, the Nebraska G A L system is one in which the one person meant to be an independent check on the power of the state typically serves as a rubber stamp to the state's proposals and plans. In the words of one youth, "Having a G A L is like having another caseworker. Thus, the system as it is currently structured perpetuates a particularly cruel fraud on all the citizens, including the taxpayers," that's my commentary, "of Nebraska. It makes it look like there is a voice for Nebraska's children in the court process, but in fact, that voice is mute. Amen. We are considered a failed J D A I site. We have an enormous disproportionate minority contact problem. We remove children at one of the highest rates in the country, still decades after child welfare reform. We incarcerate children at Y R T Cs. And I have spoken about one such young man, who was 13 years old, and was sent away to a treatment facility in Michigan, Kalamazoo, Michigan specifically, a cost of a bed $50,000 a year. Wayman Clark, the individual that you may be familiar with, who assaulted a woman in Cathedral Church, I don't know who of you represents that part of town, he's a graduate, an alum of Clarinda Academy, sister facility of Lakeside Academy in Kalamazoo, Michigan. I realize that it is often politically correct and expedient to stand up here and act as though we have no problems. In fact, we have many. And I would tell you that the issues that average, everyday citizens bring to you about their court experiences are experiences, these, this is information that you should care about. To your point, Commissioner Duda, I get that you perceive this as a completely separate issue and one that is under solely the purview of the judiciary. But sir, with all due respect, we had a man who is now a juvenile judge in New York City, a very respected individual, and we paid that, that man, along with two other attorneys, $150,000 to come here and give us an evaluation of our system. And we didn't do anything about the recommendations. The training, and I won't bore you with many of the other recommendations, has not been significantly increased. There has, there have not been major strides made in this regard. And I think that we, as taxpayers, need to be asking questions, and we, as citizens, who are endorsing the removal of children purportedly for best interests, as well as the incarceration of young adults, God knows where, I, I keep asking, we, I live in a town where we have Creighton University, we have the University of Nebraska at Omaha, we have U N L in Lincoln, we have, we have the Met Center where they treat people who have Ebola, and we can't figure out how to help Nebraska kids? Why is that? Why is it that kids are passed around like a piece of trash? And why is it that people who come down here, like me, and complain about that are, are targeted? The last thing that I would like to talk about is what I just observed today with 15 other citizens. When we went and watched court, and I have visited with Ms. Costin-Takos, who has politely told me of her belief that average people like myself, we are not competent to sit in juvenile court, which I find amazing. Since when did families become so complex that average, everyday citizens cannot sit and observe a court process? I, for the life of me, I can't understand that. Certainly, we might need some information and some expertise in terms of evaluating the types of hearings and the process by which the court procedure goes, but to say that people, citizens, are incapable of sitting in court and understanding, that is nonsense. And what I watched today, along with these 15 other people, was shocking. The only benefit to me is that something that I myself and Melanie Williams Smotherman of the Family Advocacy Movement, things we have been talking about and complaining about, there were a lot of other eyeballs in this courtroom, and they were stunned by the behavior of Judge Circaovich, who called two police officers to the courtroom. This is not appropriate, it is not acceptable, and there needs to be conversation and discussion about this. One person came, came up to me after the hearing and said, "I was afraid that I was going to be arrested because I sneezed or I laughed." This is justice?
Laura, can I, can I interrupt you for one second?
Yes.
And, and I, I'm gonna pull this back, and I know that maybe Laura and Catherine want to speak, but I'm not going-
I understand.
-to, to have a rehash of-
And, and I apologize, my-
But no, but here's, I'm asking you a simple question, and this is, the, the item on the table is the contract with Kendall, Kendall Marlowe. That's the motion and the second on the floor. You've heard the discussion from the board, and for the most part, support of having that brought in for us to figure out how to provide these services. My question to you is, are you in support of that?
I pa, I passionately support it, and I commend everyone here who is in support of that. I had to listen to Judge Circaovich deliver a soliloquy on the record just now about Nebraska Sunshine Project, about how a program like this would never work, that there is no scientific methodology, there is no level of expertise. In the interest of full disclosure, Commissioner Rogers, to your point, in this political environment, let me state on the record, I have reached out to the bar, I have reached out to numerous attorneys, I have reached out to judges. Everywhere is a closed door in Douglas County. That is not the case in Lancaster County. Now, what I would ask you is, why would it be that these court processes need to be so secretive? Just what the heck is going on? And when I'm sitting in a courtroom, listening to a judge discuss, and we're just gonna say, a judge, discuss, now decades into the appointment of, of guardian ad items for adults, I listened to this judge explain that she didn't understand Nebraska law is ambiguous, she doesn't know when guardian ad items should be appointed. Oh, give me a flipping break. In this case, we, the people, have paid 50 grand in guardian ad items for competent adults with no financial affidavit that was ever completed. I think we need to be asking questions. And the, part of the reason why we need to is because the judiciary has neglected to do the things that they needed to do. They received this report that cost 150 grand, a Phillies' report, and nothing has been done. I apologize.
No, no, no.
Very passionate about the topic.
I know, you are, and here's the thing, is that from that report to where we are now, we're, we're on good gra, we're on good ground to move forward. So, let's, let's move forward.
That is what I want to do, but I don't want to have continued discussion about how there's no problem, there is.
I know, I know, I agree. And again, Catherine and Laura, I'm gonna have you, it's gonna be very limited, because you, I gave you a lot of time the last time you were here.
And I apologize, last time, I didn't prepare to speak at all, and I was very sad, so I-
I, I understand.
So, this time, I bring my watch. First of all, 19 years ago, in, in the courthouse here, I become a United States citizen, and I cry, because this is the greatest country. I come from a communist country. There's no freedom of speech. This country had freedom of speech. And the corruption in China is so rampant, it's, you know, you just can't speak, nobody can speak. And this country, the founding father, is brilliant, being established check and balance of the three branch of government. That make it works in this country, and what makes this country the greatest. That's the ma, that's the main reason, from my perspective. And that lawyer mentioned about, you know, if she approached a neurosurgeon, my husband is a physician, he is largest physician, he's in charge of large operation, he's in charge of hundreds of physicians, staff, and technician. But if one patient approached him to ask, Dr. Wong, "I want to know why you make this diagnosis," my husband won't tell him, say, you know what, I have 20 years' experience, I've been trained, extensive trained, so you won't understand, and I'm not going to explain to you. My husband will never do this to any patient. And I believe anyone up here, if approached your own doctor, if your doctor tell you this, you know what, you have no medical training. So, I'm not explaining to you, I think you would choose another doctor. But you, and a very simple fact is, you don't have to have a law degree, you don't have to be super smart or special training. My husband has been licensed in Nebraska for 19 years. He graduated from Creighton residency program here, and he is the chief of V A Hospital, a large operation. He has the highest rank of federal government, number 15, the highest rank. But he was declared at the courthouse, courtroom here, juvenile court, without any evidence as incapacitated. Every day, he take a lot of consultation treating our veteran, the combat veteran, the most precious people in this country. Why they allow incapacitated physician to be treated? And this is courthouse, I totally respect the courthouse. That's a courthouse, that's not a psychiatric hospital. A judge cannot make medical diagnosis for a competent adult. I'm sorry, did I pass? I'm watching. And I understand everyone's time, every three minutes of your time is very precious, but I really hope everyone here understand, this is not about money, this is about children's life. My children have been trafficked twice. We plead with my motion, this is about children's life we're talking about. I don't know if, if I will receive a phone call tomorrow, she will disappear, she will be trafficked again. Why nobody care?
Catherine.
Everyone here, one more thing, you have a moral obligation to help these children.
Thank you, Catherine.
Hi.
Hi, Laura.
My name is Lori Flynn, 1514 North 104th Plaza. I wasn't planning on speaking today because I didn't know this was going on. May 6, 2014, May 20, 2014, my case was brought before this board by Melanie Williams Smotherman, and on June 17, Jeff Wagner, Chris Costin-Takos, John Lefler, I believe his name was, another attorney, came down here and talked, and it was a four-hour session, because it's on YouTube now. It, it amazes me, because Chris Costin-Takos brought up U N M C hospital, while Jeff Wagner wanted to know why you all did not fix the V A hospital problem. I mean, some of the same sentences, Chris Rogers, that thing you, you talked about, if the money's spent, I want to know where it's spent. I mean, I even remember, you also said you wanted to be a lawyer, but you just didn't want to pay to be a lawyer. So, it's, and it's online. There are cases that I think, and it is political, and, and anybody that doesn't know that Judge Circaovich is up for reelection next year, be informed. But there are cases, they don't want the public to see or hear. My case, Mark Kraft talked horribly about me, I was horrible, they put me under restraining order, it was a gag order, well, then she lifted it, because it is underneath the, it's out of the Constitution, okay? Judge Circaovich, once my case became, I mean, I was never charged, they took my children, I never adjudicated, nothing, I asked them, I got no due process, okay, none. It was brought before the board, Judge Circaovich refused herself, she didn't want it anymore, because it was not a good case.
Laura.
She sent me to Lincoln, okay, I'm just, I just want- Okay, I'm just, I just want to very quickly subpoenas, the spending the money, you were subpoenaed, there was a subpoena for Mike Boyle, Congressman Boyle, and Congressman Mary Ann Borgeson, in my case. Now, Jeff Wagner, in the June 17 hearing, you can hear him in the back room because Laura said, "Well, I was just told we were being subpoenaed." He said, "No, you weren't." Yes, you were, I turned them into you, you guys had the copies, I gave you the bills that he prepared. He billed the county, Douglas County taxpayers paid for this, and I think it was an intimidation tactic, because he was going to threaten me not to talk to anybody. It, I mean, this has to stop. People heal once they are heard. And I'm not the only case, she's not the only case, there are children and there are families, and whose child does it have to be before it's important enough? You can slam on this and say, "This isn't the forum," where is the forum? Here, your constituents, we vote you in. I voted for you. You will never get another vote from me because of this, I'm sorry.
That's right, thank you, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Rogers, were you...
No, Madam Chair, I just want to make a point, there was a statement made, and I just want to correct it, that Nebraska is a failed JDAI state. Nebraska is not a failed JDAI state, that's what the record did know.
Commissioner Boyle.
You know, I know you had talked about the forum, the problem with all of this is that we have no jurisdiction over the conduct of judges. The juvenile court is a separate court system, we have no authority over any of it. The, this is truly the wrong forum. Now, which forum it is, it has to be, I think I would start with the Supreme Court, someplace, judicial conduct, if that's what you think is wrong, there are ways, you can file complaints, but it is not here. And when you talk about, you know, getting relief and coming here, who's going to step up? We don't have the authority. It is like the doctor who is asked a question by a patient, and the doctor answers that question. Well, what if that patient went to the chief administrator of the hospital? Is the chief administrator of the hospital, of the VA Hospital, going to answer that question about the care that that patient got? The answer is no. The chief administrative officer will say, "I don't have jurisdiction over what happened, you have to talk to the doctor." So, that's what I'm saying here, is that we have no jurisdiction over these judges. We don't. It is clearly the wrong forum. And I suppose if I were in your shoes, I would start with the Supreme Court and ask them, "Where do we go? We think something should be done." And, you know, and the other, the other thing is that, you know, these decisions are made, and I know that there's a, you know, you're very frustrated about it, but it's, again, is, you know, to whom do the guardian ad litem's report? They do not report to us. They do not report to us. They, if they report to anyone, it's to the juvenile court. But we have, all we are told to do is pay the bill, and we don't like it when it gets up to a huge amount of money. I don't like out-of-home placements, I know that, you know, we have a, we have a person who's been down in Texas for many years, he's a young man who sets fires, that's a place where supposedly they can rehabilitate him, he's been there, I think he's still there for years, and it's very costly, fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year. We have nothing to say about that. So, it is very frustrating, I mean, it's just like what I said earlier, we don't call the county attorney, if you came down here and complained that my son was shot and killed, and you hear this all the time on television, these families are pleading, the violence has to stop. Okay, so they come to the city council, or they come to the county board and say, "We want you to tell the county attorney to file first-degree murder charges against that person." It can't happen. We don't have authority over him, neither does the city council, the mayor doesn't. It is a separate system, and they have to use their judgment to do what they think is appropriate. That's what these judges are doing. And in all fairness, there is another side to this, and I understand that, you know, what you saw was very frustrating, but there is another side to it, and frankly, we haven't heard it. And we're not able to take that information and digest it. We don't have the staff. And the other thing is, it's not our responsibility. I mean, it's like, again, asking us to go tell the county attorney what to do, not going to happen. So, you have to find the right forum, maybe it's the legislature. I mean, we sit here, and we'll do this a little later, probably in the meeting, we'll talk about legislative bills that we want passed, and I just saw from Lancaster County a list of changes they want. You know, we don't control the legislature, we can ask them to do things, but they don't have to do it. So, we sit here and get frustrated over the laws we have to live under that we think are unfair to constituents, but we don't control the laws, somebody else does. That's all I can tell you.
And I do understand it, and I did only come back down because I felt like he was somewhat talking to me. I do want to say that I understand, and I do understand this board's role. Is it time, again, to bring somebody else in? Is it time to bring an impartial third party in? You know, if nobody has anything to hide, it can't hurt, and it may help, it may end this, it may...
Well, I'm going to vote for this consultant, I'm voting for it, but I just want to say that, again, all we can do is take information and go to the legislature and say, "This is what needs to happen," or go somewhere else, but we are not responsible for the conduct of guardians ad litem. We only are told pay the bill. It's just like if you take a cab, you know, we're not responsible for the cleanliness of the cab, the hygiene of the cab driver, we just get in the cab and sit in the backseat and shut up and get delivered. That's our job.
And I, maybe, maybe more citizens need to be involved, because it is paying the bill, but it's paying it with taxpayers' dollars.
I understand fully, but again...
And I, I just don't think a lot of taxpayers maybe understand.
It's the way the law is structured. We don't, we can't say we're not paying for it.
Okay, I'm going to cut off.
And I'm done.
Laura, no, I'm going to cut off.
My last question, though, is why is it okay to turn a blind eye to people not doing their job?
Okay, we're not, we're not turning a blind eye.
We're not turning a blind eye.
I'm going to cut off.
I do thank everybody for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. With that, there is a motion and a second to approve the contract with Kendall Marlowe before us. Please vote.
Let's turn over here.
Okay, thank you all. Commissioner Craft, did you still want a minute for community service?
Yes. I have to find my notes, okay. The community service will have a meeting next Tuesday, the 10th, even though the county board does not have a meeting. And we're going to be discussing the county's participation and role in the Douglas County Fair, the funding of it, the board, the bylaws, where we want to see the fair go. This is going to be a lengthy meeting, but it's an important meeting. At least, I assume it's going to be a lengthy meeting. On December 1st, after our meeting, we're going to have a community service meeting again, and this will be to meet the new director of the Visitor and Convention Bureau, and to find out his goals and where he wants to be, and see if we want a full presentation in front of the board. So, that was my announcement, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
I won't be here next week, I'm out of town on some work, so I'll miss that meeting. December 1st, I will be here, I scheduled it because we don't have a meeting, so I want you to know that.
That's why I thought I'd announce it today.
Right. And then the other thing I wanted to just ask, Commissioner Kavanaugh, what's the date? Because it's important, the Administrative Services next meeting, and I apologize on that, is it...
Yes, I believe it's the 17th, Commissioner.
So that would be right after our board at some point?
It's prior.
Are they eight?
Eight AM, yeah.
Perfect, okay, I've got it marked.
I know.
It's for your benefit.
I can pick you up.
We can stream you, we can Skype you in.
Okay, just, I'll wear headsets while I'm laying in bed.
Exactly, you can be virtually there.
I get up at 10 to 9.
God bless you, you're an Irishman.
You got it. I don't even drink anymore.
Is that all you wanted to say? Okay. Next is the Health and Human Services, there is one to receive and review adopted, and adopt 2015 Douglas County Health Center, Community Mal Health Center Board of Trustees bylaws.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any...
Madam Chair, this is on, is there, I'm not sure there was action scheduled, sir?
Just receiving.
To just...
Jack, help us out.
It was from our Board of Trustees that we were now here to receive and review, and then they'll be back on for approval.
For consideration.
Or acceptance.
If I may clarify...
So there will be no action?
No action.
You're speaking. If I may clarify, I'm Deputy County Attorney, these bylaws were actually already adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, but the statute does require them to be filed with the county board, and there's not really a procedure, so we figured the best way to get them on files, just get them on the agenda so you can review them and, I guess, adopt it to the record at least, so there's some filing with it.
So, there's no action at any point on this board's part, other than receiving?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Madam Chair, can I go back to item E, Criminal Justice?
Yes.
I just want to mention that today we have some state senators coming in, I believe, one or two o'clock? No, one o'clock, and only two.
Two senators at one.
Right. One o'clock, two state senators are going to be at the Department of Corrections. The purpose of this is really to show them what our operations are, and particularly in light of the bill that's going to be sending back so many people to our facility. So, I hope you're going to attend, I'm going to be stumbling around the place, and we'll try to show them what's going on. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle. Next is, unless somebody did, I should have asked, did anybody have any questions or comments about receiving the bylaws? Okay. Human Resources, the first is the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, unless anyone has any questions or comments. Weekly CAO report on staff assaults.
That need to report.
Okay. Legislative, we will have a committee meeting after this meeting to go over our legislative items. And then item four, resolution appointing Dan Esch to the office of Douglas County Clerk Controller to compete, complete the unexpired term of Tom Kavanaugh. Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you very much. This is, it's a rare occasion that the county board gets to make an appointment to a public office, it's set up so that this board appoints vacancies, to fill vacancies in offices that we call the line offices. And by the same token, there are three public officials who appoint vacancies to this board, the treasurer, the county attorney, and the county clerk. So, this is, there are a lot of different ways this has been done, and I want to mention that when Tom Kavanaugh was appointed to the county board, it was, he was appointed on a Saturday, and it was five days after the vacancy occurred. When my father-in-law, Sam Howell, left office, he asked that his chief deputy, Lou Pantano, be appointed, and he was. And so, it's, and on the other hand, when I was, when I applied for this position, there were quite a few applicants, and I'll tell you the truth, I really sweated out. It's difficult to sit there and go through and answer questions about what you hope to do for the county board, and particularly for me, after I'd gone through the recall, it was a chance for me to hopefully regain some respect from the community that I really was not insane, and that I had, I could serve the public well and do so fairly, although I've lost my temper occasionally, but Mary Ann keeps me in line. So, we have a letter from Tom Kavanaugh, and it was really an eye-opener, Kathleen Hall came to our home and brought it.
I'm kind of a mess. Anyway, Tom wrote that, "For the last thirty years, it's been my privilege to serve the people of Douglas County as their clerk controller. During that time, I've worked hard to provide the county with the most..." Sorry, I can't read this. "It is a rare occasion at a limit, a rare occasion when we have a public official who is really stepping up and saying that he knows who can do the job, someone he hired and nurtured, and we have that opportunity." So today, I'm clumsily reading this letter. "I have given considerable thought to the question of succession, both in the clerk controller's office and countywide, this is an important issue." He discussed this question extensively with his senior staff and solicited their help in developing a strategic succession plan for the clerk's office. As a result of this, I am respectfully recommending that Mr. Daniel Esch be appointed to serve out the unexpired portion of my term as Douglas County Clerk Controller. Mr. Esch has been with the clerk controller's office since 2006, and has progressed from clerk to administrative assistant during his time on our staff, playing an active role in helping to manage the annual Board of Equalization process. So, I make a motion to appoint Dan Esch.
Second.
Commissioner Morgan.
Second that motion, and just want to say, you know, that we all received that letter, we all know Dan Esch attends a lot of our meetings. This may not be the normal way, but what occurred was not also very normal, and I feel that we need someone to come in there that knows that office well. I know that Dan has support from the staff, I've been called by some of the staff, you have a high degree of respect, Dan, from the office, I also know and hope Kathleen stays for a while, I know she has some feelings about what has transpired in her own work there, and I know you've done it a long while, but we want you to do it a while longer, for sure. I do, personally. And I think Dan will do an excellent job in these fourteen or fifteen months to go in that term, and I understand, hopefully, that you're going to run for that, seek that office, and I think that's a good thing for the people, and I also felt it was important to have someone that understands the office, and rather than go through some interviewing process where we have someone that hasn't been there, we need you to hit the ground running with the great staff that you have down there, that Tom's worked to have. So, I want to be wholeheartedly in support of this request of Tom Kavanaugh. And Mike, thank you for the resolution, and also your feelings about this, it's a little tough.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to reiterate Commissioner Boyle's point that there is no set process. I just want to just state that, you know, I wish we'd have been a different process, but I do support the resolution and will support Mr. Esch's appointment. Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. What a legacy Tom has left us, my best political friend. And he planned for this. I was here when we appointed Lou Pantano, not the same. When Jim Jansen, a year into his term, found a better-paying job and left, that's not the same thing when we had that vacancy to fill. It was several years of a term, and you had somebody that was frankly bailing out, and that's just a whole different scenario than what we had here. Tom spent his career building a good team, and I was aware when he and Kathleen were going through the process, I had no idea who they would come up with, but I knew they were going through a process of planning his continuity. And he did a great job. The process has occurred, it wasn't our process to conduct it in this situation, I believe. It did occur, and I think it had good results.
Mr. Craft.
Yes, and Tom left a well-oiled, very efficient office, and Dan, did you want to come up to the front or not? You may as well, you're going to be in the spotlight. This position is so important and so vital to the efficiency, to the efficient operation of the county, that we need to get somebody in there immediately who can merge seamlessly into the operation for the duration of this term. We could have done a national search, but it would take us half of that time...
That's right.
...to find somebody. We could have searched locally, but we know Dan has been honed for this position, and we've watched his work, and I think all of us, or most of us, appreciate his work. appreciate his work. So thank you, Dan. Thank you, Tom. And I'm so glad Tom had the foresight.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'd like to thank Commissioner Boyle for bringing this resolution, Commissioner Morgan for seconding this resolution, and the other commissioners who have spoken in support of it. It's difficult to speak to this, but it's necessary, and Tom was not afraid to do the difficult but necessary things that public service calls upon us to do. That's a real part of his legacy to all of us, and was a real part of the profile and courage that was his career and the hallmark of his public service. The precedent for what we are doing and the process that we have gone through is old and recognized both in statute and in the custom of this county board, most recently in the appointment of Tom Kavanaugh in 1986, using virtually the exact same process and relying on the exact same legislative authority. The idea that he took the time and had the foresight to take into consideration the importance of succession questions to key Douglas County operations is, again, a hallmark of his meticulous attention to detail in the execution of his public duties. The gentleman that he selected and recommends to us for confirmation today, Dan Esch, was someone that he spent years training, and that was also the unanimous recommendation of his highly professional chief deputy and senior staff, and is well-known to county officials, all of whom I personally spoke to, and universally and unanimously endorse the selection that Tom has recommended to us, including Treasurer Ewing, who joins us here today. We appreciate your being here, and his able chief deputy. The idea that we need to look at this from a strategic point of view was one that Tom spoke about repeatedly, for the best interests of the county. This is not a political decision. This is a decision based on the best interests of Douglas County and the people that we represent. I think that the broad bipartisan support that this resolution receives here today is an indication of that, and including the fact that Mr. Esch happens to be a registered independent voter, should satisfy anyone's question that there is the least bit of politics involved in this. Tom Kavanaugh did not select people based on their political affiliation. He selected the best people to do the job, and he repeatedly spoke to me, in the forceful way that only a brother can, about the fact that there's no way to be a good Democrat or Republican county commissioner. There's just a way to do the job properly. And fortunately, I think this board takes that maxim to heart, and we will today endorse his selection because it is in the best interests of the people of Douglas County, to whom he dedicated his life. And I want to thank everybody who came out during the recent week to recognize Tom and to celebrate his memory. Thank you.
I actually didn't know until just about a minute ago how I was going to vote for this. I was leaning towards not, because I don't agree with the process. I think that we have a duty. This is an elected position. We should have taken applicants. We should have seen who was out there that was interested in it. We already had precedence of that by how we did the county attorney, regardless of how that came forward. But in saying all that, you know, you count your votes and you see the votes, and the last thing I want is for Mr. Esch to walk into this thinking that you don't have my support, because you do. You're a fine young man, and I think you'll do just fine in the position. And so my vote is more for that than any other reason, because I totally disagree with how we went about getting you here. But now that you are here, I wanted you to know that you have the full board support, because I think that, again, you are a fine young man and will do a fine job with doing that. And Kathleen, you know, I hope you stay around for a while, a while, too. But I guess that's all I have to say.
With that, there is a motion and a second. Please vote.
With that, we do have... Oh, Dan, I'm sorry. Dan, did you want to say something? Do you want to come to the podium? No, you are, yeah. That's right, Kathleen. That's right.
Good morning, Dan Esch.
I guess we should say clerk, Dan Esch.
Well, I have a lot of people to thank, but I'm just going to stick to a few people right now. I've another chance to do this. I need to take a moment to thank all of you. It's quite an honor. I'm very grateful for your confidence. My coworker this morning, Kathy, she asked me, "How are you feeling?" And I, I told her I don't know, because obviously I was, you know, very excited and I was nervous. I mean, you know, obviously, I had heard good things the last few days, so, but at the same time, you never know until it happens. But at the same time, there's, you know, still this sadness, and it's just, it's very strange, and I just wish there was a way for this to happen, and Tom to still, Tom to still be here. Tom Kavanaugh was a great mentor. Him and Kathleen Hall were two of the best, are two of the best teachers I've ever had, if not the two best. And I guess one of the biggest reasons, probably the biggest reason why I'm, not probably the biggest reason why I'm so confident that I can do a good job, is because of Tom Kavanaugh's confidence in me, and having your guys' support just makes it all that better, makes me feel more empowered. And just close by saying, I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and I'm committed to doing the best job I can, because that's what Tom Kavanaugh would expect of me, and because that's what everyone deserves. So again, thank you very, very much.
Just a minute, Mike. There's a couple of lights before I have any...
I wanted to, and Dan kind of reflected on it, talking there, and I wish you the very best. And I was talking to Kathleen and Ellen when you were in executive session. I excused myself because of a conflict. You know, as you were talking, you know, you expect to see Tom here. And I think it's so important for each of us, whatever our differences are, whatever the citizens bring to us, or whatever occurs, to always have that total respect for one another, because none of us know what tomorrow really brings. So I think Tom really helped us in this endeavor to get the right person totally, and wish you the best.
Thank you.
I'll try to hold it together this time. Is there, is there a need for a formal swearing-in? I think there should be. I just want to bring that up.
It's already been arranged.
It's been arranged. Okay. Do we know when and all that?
Well, I'm actually, today, Judge McDermott, I asked him if it works out for me, if he could come by, and
Okay.
he will, but I was going to do more of a ceremony. I haven't reached out to the building commission yet, but I was thinking of having something Friday afternoon in here.
Okay.
Well, I didn't want to be, you know, presumptuous.
Well, now that I can speak a little bit, I'll tell you how proud I am of you. I have watched you over the years, and you are one terrific choice, and that's why, when I got the letter, I thought about it, and I thought, you know, why am I not calling you? So that's why I called you, and I told, called Jim and told him how I felt, and that I was really going to push for your appointment. I understood that there were other ways to do this, but this made such great sense. So I congratulate you. I know you're going to do a terrific job, because you have done a terrific job. So congratulations, and sorry I messed up on the...
No, thank you very much.
Clerk Esch, congratulations. I know firsthand that Tom felt that his confidence in you was well justified, that he had taken extra care over the years you spent working together, to help mentor you in the art of government and public service. And I know from our conversations that his confidence in you is well justified. You're going to do a great job. And anything that we can do to help and assist you and your fine staff, we're here to do. So don't be hesitant in reaching out. But I think you recognize the shoes you have to fill and how high that bar is set. And so I would just urge you to keep your eye on that prize and keep that ethic foremost in your mind, and you're going to do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dan, do you want to come around and shake our hand?
Yeah, I'll do that.
With that, we don't have a need for executive session. There is a Human Resources Committee meeting following this board meeting. Again, there will meet with local senators for the tour at 1:00 PM. And then please note that the board does not meet Tuesday, November 10th. The next scheduled meeting for the board will be Tuesday, November 17th. And last note, Douglas County offices will be closed Wednesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Is a meeting 15 minutes from now or 10 minutes?
Oh, 15 minutes.
Up at aisle 3.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody get, grab something to eat. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Please vote.